Thank you, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, January 2nd, and 2018, if you can believe that. We have four members attending tonight, and so we have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. Could we have a moment of silence, please? We now have our fifth member showed up, so we have a complete commission tonight. And would you please stand, face the flag, and begin the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Begin. Jesse?
I do. Two days from now, January 4th, there's going to be a Warf CAC meeting, the Water Reclamation Facility meeting here in the Vets Hall at 3:00, from 3:00 to 5:00. I encourage the public to please show up for that. Probably one of the most important projects going on in the city right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is the time for a public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would wish to address the commission on items not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Next on the agenda is presentations, and we have none scheduled for tonight. So we're moving right along on our first meeting of the year. At this point, we have the consent calendar, and we have two items on the consent calendar, A1 and A2. A1 is the current advanced planning and processing list, and A2 is the approval of the Planning Commission minutes of December 5th. What I'd like to do is I'd like to split the two items for a separate vote, because Joe and I had to recuse ourselves from that meeting. So could I get a motion on A1?
I move we accept A1. I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, A1 passes. And on A2, can I have a motion on A2?
We have one little small typo on A2. On the second page, after Commissioner Lour excused himself, it would be me opening the public hearing, as opposed to Commissioner Lour.
Thank you.
Aside from that, I think it's on the second page, where it says, "Commissioner Lour, open public comment." Yeah. Aside from that.
Okay, do we have a motion then?
I move we accept A2 as amended.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That's right. Sorry, I can't.
Joseph and I will abstain from that one.
Sorry.
Get in the habit, Doc.
Yeah.
Okay, next are public hearings. We have one case, B1, case number UPO-497, located at 937 Anchor Street, Morro Bay. Do we have any ex parte communications to announce?
Yeah, I've spoken to the applicant's design team on two occasions.
Okay.
I spoke to the, I went to the owner's house and had a nice visit.
Okay, great.
I also visited Mr. Kalin's house and met him and his wife Ruth, and had a little discussion.
Good. All right. So at this point, can we, I think we have a staff report. Joe, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman Lour, and good evening, Commissioners. The project before you this evening is a request for conditional use permit approval at 937 Anchor Street. The applicant, Michael Kalin, proposes, in addition to an existing nonconforming single-family residence located within the R1 residential zoning district. The applicant proposes to add a 966-square-foot second-story addition to an existing 1,155-square-foot single-story home with a 158-square-foot second-story deck over the garage and a 24-and-a-half-square-foot second-story deck at the rear of the home. The structure is considered nonconforming with regard to the eastern side yard setback, which is three feet, two inches, where five feet is the minimum requirement. This is the existing site from Anchor Street looking to the north and slightly upslope. This is the existing front elevation from a slightly different angle. This is the proposed site plan with the garage opening towards Anchor Street to the left of the image. The portion of the structure at the bottom of this image is the nonconforming portion of the existing structure that is to remain unchanged. The large tree that you see there in the front yard is to remain. This is the proposed second-floor plan, which shows the relocated kitchen, dining and living rooms, and the proposed deck over the garage to the left, and the small deck at the rear of the residence. This is the south or front-facing elevation drawing that depicts the proposed project as it will appear from Anchor Street. The proposed north or rear elevation. The west side elevation. This image illustrates the proposed eastern side elevation. The design of the proposed addition with its flat roofs is inconsistent with the residential design guidelines. Section A says that overall design should pay particular attention to the adjacent homes while remaining visually compatible with the immediate neighborhood. The homes directly adjacent to the subject property all have pitched roofs on either side and in the rear. The flat roofs are also inconsistent with Section H, that dictates that additions to existing homes should be more consistent with the existing structure, and it is not, because the existing portion of the residence that is to remain has a gabled roof, as opposed to the flat roofs. The proposed design is also inconsistent with Section B of the design guidelines that deals with scale and mass. When proposing two-story development adjacent to a single-story home, the second story should be set back from the first floor. So the scale of the proposed structure is exaggerated even a bit more, given the subject parcel is located a bit upslope from the adjacent single-story residence. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission continue the project to a date uncertain, with direction to the applicant to work with staff to bring the project into compliance with the residential design guidelines. Alternatively, the commission can also choose to deny the project, in which case staff will have to bring a resolution for denial back to a future meeting, or the commission can choose to approve the project by approving Planning Commission Resolution 01-18. And thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have questions for staff? Joseph?
Jesse?
I don't think I do.
Michael?
Joe, I guess one of the questions I have is, the design guidelines are set up to be kind of general. Did you go out and look at the situation in specific on this particular house?
I did, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Richard, do you have any questions for staff?
All right.
Okay. Okay, at this point, we'll open public comment, and we normally ask the applicant to come forward and speak. Please state your name, as you...
Sorry, I have a cold.
Okay. That's been going around a lot, so we understand.
My name is Michael Kalin, owner of 937 Anchor Street.
Could you speak a little closer to the mic?
I'm sorry. It's hard to hear you. Michael Kalin, owner of 937 Anchor Street.
Okay, thank you.
We've worked with our neighbors to develop this project. We have support of our neighborhood for the project as it's proposed. The reason that we've positioned the addition the way we have is the garage, which is now also nonconforming due to its size, needs to be enlarged. It's also built on the fill side of the lot, which has settled, so we have to remove the garage and rebuild it to the proper size and with new foundations, which makes placing the addition directly over the garage the most logical thing to do. And the reason I say this is I'm a structural engineer. So my desire is to make things as efficient and as simple as possible, and that's the reason that we've positioned the project the way we have. I understand the guidelines' intent, but I don't believe them to be rigid documents or part of the zoning code that requires that we meet every point of the document. We've tried to meet the intent, which is really to keep the neighborhood compatible and the neighbors happy, and I think we've done that. So we would like to proceed with the project as it has been proposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comment, public comment?
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Andrew Goodwin. I am the architect for the project. I wanted to briefly comment a little bit on the design guidelines, and as Michael Kalin had spoken to it, we have gone through, originally trying to meet every guideline and understand the guidelines to its intent. As you'll see in the conditional use permit application, we went through on A01 and really studied the neighborhood. The diagrams that you see there in 44, Detail 44, 34, and 24 represent us analyzing the flat roofs of the neighborhood. The red dots represent the flat roofs. So we see ourselves to be compatible to the neighborhood, even if the adjacent neighbors to the east and west of the property do not show flat roofs, the properties across the street do. Those also show stucco exteriors, similar to what we were trying to achieve. As well, the Detail 34 shows two-story homes, so really trying to say that there are two-story homes within the neighborhood and that we're trying to appease that, but we find it is an uphill battle, no pun intended, but we are, thank you, we are on an uphill site, and to be as feasible and intelligent as possible on the property, especially since the client is a structural engineer, we found that the logical side was to put it on the left or over the garage. This did come into effect some of the design guidelines that were stated in the document, but we went ahead and even went to the effect of understanding the views. So understanding the design guidelines, we understand that one of the intents is to really protect views and to protect the neighbors' quality of life in those homes. Well, in 24, Detail 24, we showcased that the positioning of that second story and the fact that we used flat roofs rather than pitched roofs helped to preserve the views of the rock and the views of the back bay for the uphill client, or the uphill neighbor. So really, the design intent, I think, is there. It really tries to appease the neighborhood, make the neighbors happy, which we have letters that showcase that, all the adjacent neighbors are in agreement with the design, and we are just here motioning, or asking for you to motion for the project to be approved as designed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Do we have any questions for the applicant? Joseph?
Well, I have a question, but perhaps Mr. Goodwin could best answer. I was just wondering, as to the, for me, things seem to be focusing on the contrast between the remaining gable roof and the proposed flat roof, and I'm just wondering what the rationale is for the contrast, be it economic or aesthetic or whatever.
One of the major factors there was that the property is nonconforming. We were led to believe that if we touched the roof above the eastern side of the home, where the gable is currently, we wouldn't have to bring the whole structure into conformance, which, again, it's three, you say three and a half feet off the property line? Three and a half feet off the property, not five feet, which is required. We, in the design itself, took the fascia of the gable and used that to tie into the design by leading that line around the entire home, where you see the soffit of the deck and the soffit of the rear deck, all the way around to the other side of the building, and that's what we took from it, trying to merge the two ideas without disrupting the economy of the project, and that's really why we kept the gable. We don't think it's too detrimental to the property, because you don't necessarily see the gable yet for a split second coming downhill. You see the roof, but the roof itself is just an aesthetic material at that point.
Thank you. Jesse? Any questions?
No questions.
Michael? Richard? Any questions? Okay. At this point, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anybody want to start this one off? Okay.
I just want to tell staff, I really appreciate what you do as a planner, and I think you've got a really tough job, and I totally respect what we've tried to do with the design guidelines, but I think that everything's a project-by-project kind of proposal. And when I looked at this project initially, what I was looking at in the neighborhood was, I think it's in one of the documents that's up there, when you start to see the scale of the adjacent home, the uphill home from this one dwarfs this one in terms of the impact of its peaked roof. I actually wondered, is it within the height restrictions that we had set up, because it looked so imposing? And then when you start to see that the way they placed the upper floor in this one actually gives that person better views and maintains views of the rock. I can't tell you how many times we've sat here and asked people to change orientations of roofs and do things just so a neighbor can have a better, you know, attempt at seeing, retaining some of the view sheds that they have, and that's been done, I think generously by a lot of folks out of being good neighbors. And so I think in this one, I'm a modernist, you know, a white house is not offensive to me. I think it's great. I think the small nuances, the way the massing, most of the houses we see come in here, people will max out the edges. This one's actually cut back on the side yards. The side yard gets wider as the house goes back. That means the massing is significantly different. If you look at the, if you look at this one, you see the massing's actually jumping up, so you have a porch, and then you have a mass, and then you have a higher mass, so it's actually cascading back from the street. And I think that the simplicity of it is something that I can accept, given the scale of the neighborhood. It's a very modest-scale project. I appreciate that you haven't tried to build out the lot in its completeness, and I think that this is actually a really good, simple project. I don't think we have many good, simple projects. We have a lot of small projects, and we have a few that end up being good. For the most part, they're just acceptable, but I think this one's actually nice. So I would respectfully disagree with the staff report, and I do think the architects have done a nice job trying to cite a difficult problem of expanding a house in a small neighborhood. We've seen lots of different people bring forward modifications in some of these adjacent streets, and I think this one retains that spirit that a lot of the neighbors have done, where they are doing modest additions and keeping it at a scale that's workable. So I'm actually going to support the project at this point. After I hear all my calls, I'm moved to support the project.
Okay, let's go over this side, Joseph. Any comments?
Sure. Well, in terms of the issue of neighborhood compatibility, you know, I looked at the design guidelines, because I frankly wasn't all that familiar with it, so I looked at it several times. And, you know, I don't, I think clearly it doesn't mean that if there's no craftsman house in the neighborhood or no mid-century modern home in the neighborhood that someone can't initiate that kind of a design and be the first one. It has more to do with, I think, the massing and the size of the house to the lot, and the roof design and articulation and all those sorts of things. So for me, it was looking at the specific things in the guidelines with respect to the remodel, and the language that says the remodeled portion of the home should look as if it were not remodeled, and that effort should be made to sort of follow the original roof design. And I was looking in particular at the existing roof and its seeming contrast to what was being proposed, but having heard the explanation for it, to me, it strikes me, it's a little too onerous to essentially have to tear down and rebuild what was going to be the untouched portion of the house because of that setback issue. So that really cured my major objection. And I'd also say, you know, with respect to the design guidelines for remodeling, the whole idea of it looking like it hadn't been remodeled, you know, I don't think we really intend to sort of exclude, you know, the old and the new being brought together. You know, I'm thinking of, you know, the Monterey Aquarium, where clearly modern and old can be really made something wonderful. It has to do with, rather than, rather the existing and the new being joined together, they have to be integrated, they have to be in some fashion harmonious. And so I think it'd be a good idea to put that kind of language in our design guidelines as well, so that we don't, because frankly, looking in the neighborhood, there are lots of houses that have flat roofs, and the one directly across the street is a combination of gabled and flat, and to my eye, those people did a pretty nice job of sort of, you know, making the two things fairly harmonious. So those would be my comments.
Jesse?
I also want to thank staff for putting together a nice report. That was very informative. So I had a few notes here. I agree with Mr. Kalin's assessment of the garage structurally. There is some significant structural issues that will need to be addressed. Logically, it makes sense, since the foundation appears that it would need to be remedied in every event, that we would allow him to construct that in the place where he's going to have to reconstruct that foundation anyway. So that's my first thought, just logically, it flows. I do like that they maintained the legal nonconforming setback without alteration. I think, given the choice, they would have preferred to alter, and, you know, since they didn't, and they were, you know, they're showing a willingness to work together, and I appreciate that. So the third thing, the roof slope, to me, the minimalist part of me likes the low-slope roof. I don't really feel like it was, it'll look out of place in the neighborhood when I walked I like the minimalism of it, so that's all I have.
Richard?
Yeah, when I went down there, I saw that there's a big old crack in the driveway where the thing's shut, you know? And one of the first things I asked Michael, I went, "Did you talk to the neighbors around?" You know, and he said that he was, that he had talked to the neighbors. And one of the things that I think Commissioner Lucas mentioned is the, by positioning this addition, the second-story addition, giving the uphill neighbor still a view, you know, that was a nice consideration, setting it back. My main concern was the flat roof as compared to what we have right now. So one of the things I did is I kind of, if you drive down the street a little bit further, and I'm a fan of far, but for, you know, massing, okay, so, and when I see a flat roof, it kind of gives you that massing look, and there's a couple houses, if you go down that, you know, with the stucco, and when you have it, that's kind of what we try to avoid, you know? But that said, I think that, and as an engineer, I totally understand, like, from the logic standpoint, on that, an efficient way of building and why this is being done the way it is. The other thing that I did was interested in hearing from the Commissioners and more is that, like, we talk about articulation and, you know, and the owner did mention that he's taken the privacy issue, you know, of the people on the west side, you know, by not putting huge windows there and stuff. But I, I don't, I don't think it's a bad project, okay? I think that, given what we're, the parameters and given the situation that we have, and I totally get the design guidelines, and we do appreciate your work in tying that in, because that's kind of helping us move in the right direction there, and I hope this is not a discouragement, you know? But I don't, in this particular case, when I walked around and looking around the neighborhood, I think that it's okay.
Okay, thank you. What I see with the project is we have the three points that have been brought up. You know, the general is a flat roof appropriate in this residential neighborhood. The second-floor massing on the east side having essentially the, more of the massing on the west side instead of on the east side, and then the pitch roof in combination with the flat roof. And that's what I see, you know, the design guidelines were meant to address those items, and that was what should have been brought up. So where I stand on it, I have no problem with, you know, integrating modern and traditional styles in a neighborhood. I think it increases the, you know, the fun and just makes a neighborhood much more lively. So flat roofs in general, I think, can work in situations. The second-floor massing to the west side instead of to the east side of the project, I'd agree, it would, as you do a step-down with the neighborhood silhouettes, it would be more appropriate, just from that point of view, that your massing would be, your second-floor massing should be to the east side. But on this particular project, for these particular reasons, you know, I think we, you know, I don't have a problem with the solution that was brought forward on this, especially taking into account that the neighborhood, you know, the neighborhood views to, although if they're not protected and shouldn't be, I think it's, I think for the reason of structural economy and stuff, that it makes more sense to put the massing on the west side, the way you did it. The third point- The third point is the sloped, or the pitch roof in combination with the flat roofs. That's where I have a problem with this project. I think, you know, I like the way, the articulation of the project, I like, I like the simplicity of it, I like the clean crispness of it. But I have a problem, I think a lot of that is destroyed with leaving that, that, you know, gabled roof in there. I think we could handle a, a variance or an exclusion, I think we could craft something to word wise to allow them to, to, to remove that roof and leave the structure of the, of the, of the existing floor plan and the existing walls in place. But I guess that's, that's a question for staff, I guess, at this point.
Yeah, that, that's not an issue, really. They could, they could change the roof as long as we maintain that wall plan and the foundation underneath that, that section.
Okay.
It would be if you were removing that, that you can't put it back, right?
Right.
But if you're keeping it, that's fine. I mean, you, we see houses where there's substantial additions done and they're maintaining a non-conforming portion of it and the roof is taken off and changed from pitched to flat, flat to pitched, that's, that's not uncommon, so.
Okay. Okay, that, I could, just a second, let me finish, let me finish my comment. So I think what I would like to see, and I think, you know, it's, this isn't a economically unviable solution, would be to, to remove that pitch, you know, the gabled end, you know, and then reset it with some high heel, you know, flat trusses. And I think you could, you could get a, another height so that you could articulate, you could, you could break down the massing a little bit more with just, with just a little intermediate height there and that would help, help, help the project all in all. And I think that would, would take away that little bit of incongruity that you see when you see the project. And I know, you know, I know economically, you try to leave as much as possible, but I don't think that would, with the scope of work that you're doing here, I don't think that would be a large percentage of the budget. So, you know, I don't, I don't think we need to tear down the, the floor plan underneath and I don't think, and I think we can handle that with wording in the, in the conditions. So let me see how the rest of the commission feels about that and then we'll, we'll open up public comment again. So, Richard?
Well, for clarity, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Could you, could you maybe flip another, just keep flipping and I'll tell you what it is. Let's see, keep going. I just want to, like, so, it's the front of the house, that's, hey, right? Yeah, that one would be all right, yeah, okay. That would be all right. Now, off to the right, you got...
Right.
Okay. What you're saying, okay, you got gable. What you're saying is at the ridge there, making that straight and over, or do you want to bring it down? What are you, what are you saying?
What I'm saying is probably about mid-height.
Mid-height.
So...
So about halfway down, you want to straighten it out?
Yeah, and I think, I think that the app can, and the, and the architect can figure out the correct height. But I think, I think maybe a two-foot, a two-foot rise on there or something would, would give you another level of articulation and would tie all the roof...
Roof lines.
Roof lines together.
Okay.
So, okay. Joseph?
I think Chairman Lur answered the question that I was going to ask is whether, was there a, another solution that would allow us to change the gabled existing roof other than tearing down the whole structure? That's been answered to my satisfaction. And if I read Architect Goodwin's words correctly, you know, he, he would have liked to have made the existing gabled roof a more harmonious roof and probably would have liked to have put a flat roof structure up there had he been able to without destroying the whole room. So, I, I would be very much in, in favor of, of a solution which changed the gabled roof to something more harmonious with the contemporary style of the remodel.
Jesse, do you have a comment?
I do have a couple comments, or questions, really. I don't know if, if I can ask the applicant if he's willing to do that at this point.
We'll, we'll open that up.
Okay. That would be my first question. As I recall, this is on a raised foundation, so that's another question I have for the applicant. Just want to make sure. I know it's raised foundation in the back, I don't know if it's, is it, it's raised 18 inches, all the, 18-inch clear? I was ready to recommend approval on this project as is, so I would hate to, hate's the wrong word. I would, I would be reluctant to continue this on a stipulation that they changed the roof slope on the existing, on the proposed non-altered portion of the residence. That's just my take, so.
Michael?
This is, as I, as I look at the plans, and Richard's going to bail me out here when he sees his plans. On the, on the one drawing, it says, "Not in scope," which makes me think you're not doing anything to those two bedrooms and bath at this point. So, the idea of taking the roof off would, would be a potentially significant thing. I keep going back to number 21 that's on here and I think the, the kind of simple monotone roof scape trim color package is so simple. And it's, it's something that the, it's a low sloped roof. If it was a steeper sloped roof, I think we'd have a, a much different discussion. And I, I wouldn't have been as sympathetic. And plus, it's a secondary roof relative to the mass that's out in front because the tree is shielding quite a bit of the impact of that sloped roof. So I'm, I'm actually okay with it as it is, but I'm, I'm willing to consider the questioning to the owner to see if in fact they had, had an interest in doing so. It, it doesn't bother me if they want to, but I don't want to condition it that it would have to do that, I'm afraid.
Okay, let's open up public comment and allow the, the applicant or the owner to step forward. Do you understand our question?
Yes, yes, I do. And I, actually, I have a question. I'm just wondering about the process that, would, would we need to seek a variance in order to remove and replace that roof?
No.
So, it would be a matter of just simple document revision.
In fact, depending on the comfort level of the, of the commission, they could simply just condition you to do it and you could work with us on that.
Okay. Because, to be honest, that, that was our first desire, was to make all the roofs harmonious. But in looking at how, you know, the existing conditions, we, we felt that if we moved that direction, we would simply be buying ourselves trouble. So, if, if that's a condition, we would be happy to, to, to go with it.
Okay, great. I think we'd, I think we'd have a much, you know, much more cohesive project on that if, if you're willing to, if you're willing to do that. And Jesse, do you have a question?
I, I did have one more comment. So I, I do agree with staff's recommendation to a degree. Maintaining the legal status of that wall means not touching it, really. So I mean, putting a new truss roof on this structure without digging into those walls too much doesn't seem very feasible. So I just would encourage the applicant and everybody to maintain the, the legal non-conformity of that wall.
Yeah. We, we would work with them to make that happen, right?
And Jesse, we're, we're basically talking about the same dead loads and the same live loads, you know, on those walls. So I don't think we're, we're talking about changing any of the loading on any of the structure, you know, except for, well, probably the total dead load would be about the same.
We would have to cut, we would have to cut the gable portion of the, of the existing wall off.
Right.
Potentially, we'd have to add top plates to the existing wall and then set the trusses and outlookers for the, the eaves on that wall. But we would not actually remove any portion of that wall.
Yeah, we could probably work...
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, great. We'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Do we need more discussion or do we want to make a motion?
For, I want to make sure I'm visualizing it properly.
Okay, correct.
Okay, so, when you, when we're looking at this, we got the, looking at the addition, straight, straight, it's going to come down. It'll come down maybe a little bit below the ridge, then it'll go straight and then come down.
Okay, Richard, the way I visualize it, it would basically be, you know, the height of that flat roof that extends over the, the first floor section would be below the window level.
Okay.
And probably above, you know, probably between the railing and the, and between that fascia and the window.
Right about there.
Yeah, right about there.
All right. Okay, that'll look good.
And they could even articulate for the entryway, you know? Could be, could be another portion articulated there for the entry.
Okay, okay.
Do you, Mr. Goodwin? Do you envision a parapet type wall or pitching to the rear or...
Let me open public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, okay, you can, can step forward, I'm sorry. It's the details here.
We'll, we'll work together with Structural Engineer, Mr. Kalin, and, and come up with that solution. But the, off the top of my head, it wouldn't necessarily need to be a parapet, per se, unless we have mechanical equipment or something like that that needs to be protected and from the visual eye, from visual inspection. But ultimately, it's the exact same roof type that we have everywhere else. It would look odd if the fascia changed to be two and a half feet thick versus the, you know, 16-inch thick that we have everywhere else. You know, there's really something that we would try to do to make everything look congruent with that and that basically means a flat roof with a slight slope to it, you know, the typical flat roof slope.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, do we need, do we need some wording for this condition or...
So, we need to do a couple things. We need to, first, and probably the easier one, is I'd like to modify Condition 5, planning Condition 5. It says, "The applicant shall be prohibited from demolishing any portion of the non-conforming wall." I would like to get rid of that language and say, "The applicant shall maintain the non-conforming wall and foundation located along that east line." That way, they can do some, they can make some changes to a structure that they need to. And then we need to add a condition, planning condition 6, that requires them, that the applicant, to, to change the roof pitch for that lower area from the gabled end to a flat roof, as discussed in planning commission, so.
Okay.
That's, that's the condition that we would add. So there'd be, there'd be, there'd be a planning condition 6 that requires that to be changed.
Okay, I think that's pretty, pretty clear. I don't think we need to, do we need to work out the actual wording at this point or can we leave that to staff?
You, you're telling us what to do, we're going to, we'll write up a condition that reflects that direction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then do I have a, do we have a motion?
Let me find it here. I, I would move that we, we'd out resolution PC 01-18 with the qualifications of findings 5 modified as we just indicated and the addition of finding 6.
Okay.
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion?
Just a comment, when we do this, like, this way, you guys as staff, this will reflect our design guidelines a little bit better, no? With, with, by having the roof flattened like that, it kind of reflects what we're talking about with our design guidelines then.
Yeah, this is nice, it makes it consistent.
Consistent.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's good, it, it, just throughout, that's, yeah, this was a good solution.
And I do want to state that design guidelines are guidelines.
Yeah.
So that we can take these individual projects and use our best.
It, it's actually why we gave, you know, you never see alternatives from us, it's probably the first time you've seen them. Well, when, in looking at the project, I thought the planning commission, you know, in, in listening to comments from you on other projects, I thought there might be a desire to go along with the design. I didn't want to hold them up and so we allowed, I, I kept the, we gave the alternative and brought the resolution with us in case you did want to do that. I mean, we're, we're being cognizant of, it is, it is subjective, you know, our design guidelines and, and they're not hard and fast rules, right? So, there's, you know, different people can see things differently and so we were trying to, you know, be fair to the applicant and allow them to get through a process and then all, also point out, this, planning commission adopted the design, you know, developed the design guidelines and we wanted, and we pointed out where we found inconsistencies. So, that's kind of what we're supposed to be doing.
I think it's important, though, this is, this is not an easy one.
Yeah.
This, this is on the harder side of what we're going to see. And it's in the small neighborhoods where you have small additions happening that I think you both have to have the most flexibility, but you also really have to look at the larger context. And it's not going to just be whatever is right beside you necessarily because it's a complex, three-dimensional hillside that has everything moving around it too, including the landscape.
Yeah.
Which is, which is really critical. And, you know, again, I, I think the main thing for, for staff to take away from this one is that the articulation of this project is much different than some of the most simple things we see come through.
Yep, I agree.
And that, that, the nature of the proportions and the nature of the, the stucco control joints and things like that, we don't see these things usually.
Yeah.
We usually see things that look like somebody threw a two-by-four and then stuck it over it and that's the detail that we get. So this is a higher level work that, that's really hard to necessarily see at first glance.
Yeah, and I'd just like to comment that I, I think the applicants did a good job of following through with the, with the language of this type of a design and, and stuff. So I think it's, I think this will help make it even more consistent with what they're trying to do. And I'm glad they're willing to, willing to, to go the extra cost to do it, so. So can we call, call the question?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Barron?
Aye.
Commissioner Engraffia?
Aye.
And Chairman Lur?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And just one more comment. I, I like the ability to be able to move the projects forward without any further continuances and so that everybody can, can get her done. So, okay, thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to new business, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Planning commissioners' comments?
I'd, I'd like to say one thing to staff. I really appreciated the way you guys put this together, given us alternatives, given us, I mean, the stakeholders involved, or there's so many people. And I appreciate the, letting us know what we're, what we're approving that's not within the guidelines. And I really appreciated that, so.
And in a similar vein, reading the information here, you created a certain stress in me because I couldn't easily resolve the problem and I knew that there were probably some economic issues. And I, I imagine it's even more stressful for your office to do, to make that decision initially and then have other people look over your shoulders and...
We typically try to work through, we, we requested changes of the applicant upfront, they just didn't want to change the design. I get that, I mean, we're not going to dictate, you know, dictate to them. You can ask for whatever you want. It's just, you've got to understand that we're going to bring it forward and point out the, the issues and that's part of, part of the process. So, I think the solution on this was a good one.
Okay, Scott, do you have any comments?
I don't have anything.
Okay. So, seeing no more comments, we will adjourn to the next regular scheduled planning commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building at 209 Surf Street on January 16th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everybody, for listening.
Good deal.
Good deal.